We will call this meeting to order. Councilwoman Hawkins will give our invocation.
I'd like to say, dear God, we come before you tonight humble, grateful, and just honored to be here one more night with our town. Romans eight and twenty-eight says that all things work together. For those who are called according to his purpose, I believe that our town, and this is the right time, and we are the right council at this time to pursue and reach God's purpose. I ask that everyone here tonight have an open mind as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hawkins. This evening, we do have a special guest who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. We have Ms. Zoe Dawson, who is an eighth grader at A.G. Cox, the vice president and member of the Beta Club, a Beta Convention finalist and a member of the debate team. Most importantly, she is the big sister to Brandon and Aubrey. Ms. Dawson, if you would come to the podium? And if we would all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Goodbye, United States of America. We are the people of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Dawson, if you would come up front? Next, we'll have our roll call by Town Manager Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As you all will recall, we've added this step for our voting software. So if you all would certainly enter that you are here by hitting yes and submitting it accordingly. Just that was great. Evan, I believe all are accounted for. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. At this time, I would like to please have a motion to approve our agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
The agenda has been approved. At this time... Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor for approving the agenda, please use your clicker. Motion carries. At this time, we'll have recognition of our new employees. Interim Chief Williams, I understand that we do have a new employee.
I am sorry, I forgot to inform the town manager that he was out ill.
Oh, well, we're sorry to hear that.
Sorry for...
It's all right. We wish him well, and please give him my regards.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have our proclamations read by our town clerk, Mr. Don Harvey.
Our first proclamation this evening is on Women's History Month. American women in every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical, economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of their home. And whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation of providing the majority of the labor force of the nation. And whereas, American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created a more fair and just society for all. Whereas, these contributions, the American woman in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. And now therefore, I, Brandy Harrell, Mayor Protem, of the town of Winneville, hereby designate March as Women's History Month, honoring the contribution and legacy of women. In witness whereof, I do set my hand and cause the seal of Winneville to be affixed this eleventh day of March, 2024.
Thank you.
And secondly, we have another lady that we would like to recognize tonight, who is in attendance, and this is Joyce Harris Mills-Weldon. Whereas, the Winneville community would like to recognize Joyce Harris Mills-Weldon to be the first woman to run for public office in Winneville. And whereas, she is the daughter of Jarvis and Peggy Harris, who lived at 120 Depot Street, Winneville, North Carolina. And whereas, she ran for town alderman sometime around 1972 at the request of several town citizens who wanted to see a change for women and thought she would be a good representative for the town of Winneville. And whereas, there was only one seat up for election. And whereas, she ran against Tyree Stocks and Calvin Henderson. And whereas, Calvin Henderson won the election. And whereas, the Daily Refractor published an article about Joyce Harris Mills being the first female to run for a seat on the town of Alderman for the town of Winneville. Now thereof, I, Brandy Harrell, Mayor Protem, of the town of Winneville, hereby honor her contribution and hereby proclaim. In witness whereof, I do my hand and cause the seal of Winneville to be affixed this eleventh day of March, 2024. And as I said, she's in attendance tonight.
If we all could stand and give her a hand.
Can all of us go down and take this, since we are majority female board? Can I have a moment of personal presence?
Yes, sure.
The founders of Winneville, what were their names, Ms. Nelson? You remember those two men? That they didn't find that A.G. Cox bought the land from them. Their names were what? I just wanted this young lady to know that, because your last name's Dawson, right? I wanted you to know that about our history here in Winneville. Could have been some of your relatives. Who knows?
Exactly, exactly.
That sold land and moved out west. They were two black men. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much, Councilwoman Robinson. All right, at this moment, we will have our public comment.
I will read the public comment procedure for everyone before we get started with any comments. The public comment period of thirty minutes provides an opportunity for residents to comment on any item included in the agenda or to address the town council on any other matter related to the town of Winneville. For an item included in the public hearing section of the agenda, residents should address the council at the time the mayor invites public comment on that item. No public comment may be made to the council during the meeting except during the public comment period or as part of a public hearing. Individual speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes, and no more than three speakers may address the council on a single matter. The town council may elect to take no action on the matter addressed by a speaker, may schedule the matter for further consideration at a future council meeting, or may refer the matter to town staff for disposition. Copies of the town public comment policy are available in the rear of the Assembly Room. I believe we have one comment, Mr. James Godfrey Jones. And I believe, Mr. Jones, you have given handouts to the council for their information.
I have. My name is James Godfrey Jones at 127 Board Street here in Winneville. And I have two items that I'm going to quickly go through within my two minutes, hopefully. Our church, Mount Shallow Missionary Baptist Church, located at 224 Board Street, is currently facing significant drainage problems that are causing inconvenience and potential damage to our property. Over the past few months, we have noticed an increasing amount of water pooling around the church premises, especially during heavy rainfall. This stagnant water not only poses a safety hazard to our congregation, but also has the potential to cause structural damage to the building and surrounding areas. We have made efforts to mitigate the issues underneath the church, but they have proven to be insufficient in providing a long-term solution to the total problem. Considering the vital role our church plays in the community, serving as a place of worship, community gatherings, and various social activities, it is crucial to address this issue promptly. We believe that the town's expertise and resources can greatly assist us in finding a sustainable solution to this drainage problem. Therefore, we kindly request your assistance in assessing the damp draining situation at our church and provide recommendations for appropriate measures to address the issue. This may involve conducting a thorough inspection of the area, identifying the underlying causes and suggesting potential drainage system modifications or improvements. Also, we also have a community garden that we've worked on for the past three years. And we believe that a community garden not only promotes a sense of community spirit and camaraderie, but also contributes to the well-being and sustainability of our town. However, we are in need of financial assistance and resources to elevate the success of this project. Our church has already identified a suitable location at the rear of our church, and we have volunteers ready to contribute their time and effort. Nevertheless, we face challenges in terms of funding and acquiring the necessary resources. And again, one of those issues we are facing is the drainage issues in our garden. So we therefore request any support in funding, resources, or anything that the town can contribute towards this community garden would be greatly appreciated. We are also in discussion with a group of churches, a group that have secured some federal funding to assist us with the community garden. And that will help us as well. But anything that Town of Winneville can do to assist us, we appreciate that.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Mr. Godfrey, Mr. Jones, I got a question. Is that all right?
Yes, sure.
Have you addressed this problem before? This is the first time about the drainage problem that you have at the church?
We have talked about it in the past, before the town came through and put in the, what do you call it, the nails or whatever, the big round things underneath the towel. Yes, they came through and put the towels in and located maybe three or four different drainage endets on the property. Unfortunately, the drainage connectors, they're always dry. There's no runoff going to them. The runoff is going everywhere else except down the drains where they're supposed to go. So that just causes all the water, the water just stands. And I left some pictures over there for you all to see. But the water just stands and stands, and inside our church, we get this powdery substance. You know, from the moisture drying up, it leaves a salty substance on the walls within the church. So we're facing issues because of that drainage. And if we could get the water to run down the drains that the town installed, that would probably solve the problem.
Thank you. Are there any other council members that have questions or comments?
I do. In terms of the drainage, my first question is, you said that you reported this to the town a few years ago. What was the result? Did they come out and take pictures? Or what was the result of them coming out? I know you said they installed something.
Yes, the town was aware of the problem, and they came out to try to resolve it with installation of the towels and the drainage endets. But unfortunately, like I say, the slope, I guess, towards those endets is not working. The water's not going down there. There, like in the storms or floods, I mean floods, I thought it was floods. But the water actually goes away from there instead of into...
About how many years ago was it? What was the duration of that, from your call to...
That towel was installed probably about three years ago.
And I'm just wondering if someone can go back out there to see, you know, what's happening, to kind of get an assessment of what's happening? Because with water, you know that you have mold that can be, you know, possibly be a result of that. So that was my wonder.
And I know that with the community garden, before Stephen came on, we had Melissa, and she was looking for sites for a community garden here in Winneville. And the community garden concept was, you know, something that was a community thing that we were going to do with some of the vacant lots. You know, like on Ammon Street. There was a vacant lot that was too small to build a house on, and that was something that we had anticipated using for a community garden at that time. So this would be something that does fall under auspices of a lot of towns and cities. Bethel especially, they have lots of community gardens there. And it's been a very successful, very successful movement in helping people with the prices of groceries being so high at this time.
Something like this, and add this one last thing. We are receiving support from this consortium of churches with federal funds. We haven't gotten them yet, but once we do, we'll be doing the ground garden, the tunnel garden. They're going to provide those, and it would be a great resource for kids to learn about. And it's for the whole town of Winneville, for everybody, you know, for the most, for the kids to learn about. Get their hands dirty, learn about gardening.
Would he need to come back during the budget process when we...
Yes, ma'am.
Do the nonprofits?
That would probably be the best, to fill out an application, and we can certainly get you one, Mr. Jones. Thank you.
May I ask one more question of Mr. Jones regarding the drainage?
Yes.
Have you had somebody come out and look at the property to make sure that it's properly leveled and graded? And somebody might be able to help me, but I know that properties, if they're not leveled and graded properly, they do not drain, and so all of the town has tried to help with towels. And if somebody, if I'm misspeaking, somebody can correct me. Oftentimes, it's an issue of the property itself being leveled and graded. Has that been looked at?
I believe that's exactly what the problem is. And when we requested assistance from the town some years ago, someone did, we had some people from the town come out and assess the situation. And then because they were doing the drainage and everything, I think it was Christian that that would take care of it. Unfortunately, yes.
I just think often, it's the owner of the property, and maybe misspeaking, that is responsible for that. For instance, when you build a home, or you have anything, engineers come out, perhaps that's the wrong term, but they, the surveyors, and make sure the property is properly leveled and graded. And so I'm wondering if you've had a professional in that area take a look at that.
We, that church was built in that location years ago, and I'm not sure what type of doning or ordinances or rules they followed at that time. Most likely was not, you know, like I said, physical, somebody, probably they're not.
Thank you.
Some of the drainage problems on our end have been caused by efforts to drain it. Our backyard, you can swim in anytime it's a pretty good rain. And it's caused by the pipes not being able to take the water away. And these pipes were installed, I don't know, can't remember exactly, but they were probably installed about the eighties. But they don't adequately move the water fast enough not to get ponding in certain areas. I noticed that there's a lot more ponding over on the side since this last rain than we usually have. I'm a little close to it, because that's the church I belong to, so we don't have to ask anybody to reveal that.
Ms. Parks? Could we have someone to go back out and just to check to make sure that we are in compliance and that we are doing...
Yes, sir.
The system that we have in place is doing what it's supposed to be doing?
Yes, sir. I'm going to give Mr. Jones my card. He can contact me, and I'll get with you.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, for council, the next item is our consent agenda.
A move for approval of the consent agenda.
A second.
There has been a motion and a second.
Mayor Protem? Before that's voted on, I would like to point out, Ms. Robertson pointed out on page six and nine of the last one, which is page fifty-six in your agenda. I had left out her name. I had put no one's name, unfortunately, in there. But this, I have, will make that correction, as was in the email that I sent on those that are approved, if you so desired, if you...
Don, which set? I'm sorry, I missed that.
It was on page fifty-six.
Of the, which set?
I think it was the early, the ones from the last regular meeting.
Okay, February...
Page six of nine.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you, ma'am.
And thank you, Ms. Robertson, for bringing that to my attention.
Thank you. So can I, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of Councilwoman Robertson's name on page fifty-six of the minutes?
So moved.
A second.
All in favor of approval, please use your clicker. The motion carries. Thank you so much. Next up, we will have our old business, Town Manager Parker. Could you please give us an update on the status of the Human Relations Board?
Absolutely, and thank you, Mayor Protem. So at your seats, you all have the approved amended set of bylaws for the Winneville Human Relations Board that were last amended on October ninth of 2023 last year. And as you may recall, we added some verbiage to the bylaws that outline how the council will move forward with filling vacant seats on the board. And basically, it will fall in line like we fill vacant seats on our other volunteer boards. People will apply, rank their interest on particular boards, and then the council will review those applications and appoint accordingly. Needless to say, I think it would be fair to say we've had a challenge where the Human Relations Board is considered in terms of having a selected membership where we can maintain a quorum on an ongoing basis and have a regular meeting. I do believe that people are busy, and as such, we've really struggled to try to get that core group of six to meet on a regular basis. If I'm not mistaken, we have, and Don, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we have three seats open currently. That is including the chair's seat. Mr. Alton Watford was our chair, and he resigned. One of the two ladies who were most recently appointed to the Human Relations Board, Catherine Hill, has had to step down due to personal reasons. And therefore, we do have three of six seats that are currently open. So I just give that update to council so that you all can discuss accordingly and decide where we go from here regarding the Human Relations Board.
I would open it up at this time for council regarding discussion of the Human Relations Board.
I'd like to speak to the Human Relations Board. I am currently the co-chair of the Human Relations Board, and I would like to hope that the Human Relations Board remain. I believe that that is an anchor in the community in which we live, because the Human Relations Board serves to address ways that we can be more sensitive to everyone's need. I believe that's in alignment with our mission and our vision. I know that we are at three people at this time, and I am asking, once we continue to discuss, to ascend to chairperson of the Human Relations Board. I have reached out to several people in the community, and they are interested. I know there is an application process, and I would like to follow up on that. But I was reserving that until we had this discussion, because I knew it was coming about.
I have been very disappointed with the fact that we haven't been able to at least have a quorum. I serve as the liaison for the Human Relations Board. But then, I also serve on the Pitt County Human Relations Board, and I realized that they had the same struggle that we've had. So it kind of encourages, ma'am. And the Pitt County Human Relations Board, I think it's July, they're going to actually come to Winneville for a meeting and allow citizens, you know, to interact with them and to see what the Human Relations Board is. So I do invite you all to come back during July, when the Pitt County Board comes to Winneville. But I would like to see our board continue. Maybe that we need to make some modifications on our, the way that we do, on our membership, the way that we do. But I would like to see it continue. And I would be... And um, I would be willing to help work with some of the things that I would like to see done and we bring it back to the board for approval. As far as changing some of the, some of the guidelines that we have. I do appreciate everything that our town manager did to get us started. You have to start somewhere. It was just a start. And you have to be willing along the way to change as you see it needs to be changed. But I would like to see our board exist, continue to exist. I would like to see um, let's get some members that will come to meetings and we can do some things in our community to build relations within the Winterville community. I have met people, I've worked with people that I never would have had I not been on this board. And everybody's not gonna serve on the town board, but there are people in our community who want to build those bridges between the different segments of our community and I would love to see this board do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Yes, I have one. Uh, how many uh, active members that active participate at this time, at least come to the meeting? Do we have at least three?
No, two out of six.
Two out of six.
Now, if you include former Chair Alton Watford, it would be three out of six, cause he did come with regularity.
So as it stands, now you only have two active?
Correct, out of six, cause uh, one current member who would like to remain a member, she has had some, she has young children and has some challenge, has had some challenges getting here, but has recommitted herself to, to joining us and uh, then we have three openings.
So you will have three then?
Yes, we have three openings.
I would suggest then, instead of have a, having, what is it, right now you have six board members?
Correct.
Uh, move it down to five and then you can, at least you can have a active meeting until it grows. Then you might would consider of increasing your board back to six or whatever. So you can have at least a meeting. If you can have, if you can have three active me, uh, members, that means that you do have a quorum and that you can have a meeting. So I will recommend that we move it down from six, from six to five and so we can stay active.
Currently, you would have a challenge with that.
Okay.
Cause you have three openings.
Uh, say it again now?
There are six members, three of which are vacant, so if you move it down to five right now, three are vacant, your majority is vacant. Does that make sense?
Are we gonna give a timetable to go ahead now that we are having this discussion to launch out?
So I would like to say that um, it sounds like the information has been posted. Um, the information, I guess Dawn, um, and Terry, uh, Town Manager Parker, excuse me. The information has been posted, it has been sent out. Um, are we getting citizens that would like to be on the board? Where are we with, excuse me, with those um, those applications? Um, to your point, Councilwoman Hawkins, um, I too would like to see this board flourish because um, that's my, that was my entry point to the town of Winterville. I was on that board and it is amazing board. Um, and it's comprised of you all that are in the audience, it's comprised of the citizens. In order to carry out the mission uh, of the town and promote equality and things of that nature, respect and goodwill uh, amongst each other. So I would urge you, if you are interested in things that are going on and would like to be an intricate part of the town of Winterville, as you already are, um, you know, fill out the application, come by and, I'm invited folks. Come by and talk to, come by and talk to um, Town Clerk, uh, Dawn Harvey and, and uh, Town Parker, um, Town Manager, um, Parker regarding uh, what that would look like for you uh, as a board member for the Human Relations Board.
Mayor Protem, one quick question.
Yes, sure.
Kind of to follow up on the question you initially asked. Um, Mr. Harvey, have we had since the town hall, um, any interested applicants apply? Because I know it was, it was stated to that large crowd, um, if they were interested to apply. Have we had anybody apply since the town hall?
No ma'am.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Uh, so Councilwoman Hawkins, as far as a timetable, it seems like there was a discussion from Councilwoman Robertson about updating the bylaws, is that correct?
Yes.
So um, I would say that maybe we would update the bylaws, um, as we can email and send our recommendations uh, to our town manager and then uh, we would go from there. So hopefully you all will be, as a council, could send those within the next um, seven to ten business days and we can follow up from there.
I think that that would be a great way to, to move. Uh, send our recommendations. I have a few recommendations and I will send them in.
Thank you so much. Any other discussion?
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
During that time period, I can, I will be glad to put out some solicitation.
Thank you.
Uh, through our typical networks for applicants and uh, probably about that time of year anyway, for all of our different ones, but it, you know, also include uh, the Human Relations Board.
Thank you so much.
And I've seen those um, fly, I say flyers, but notices that you've sent out on Nextdoor. Now, I, I really appreciate those. It really gets the word out to our citizens about what's going on in Winterville.
Well, I was uh, contacted today that we need to expand our communication out to what we have and what we decide to do uh, for our town a little bit more. Uh, come, especially one way would be uh, the utility bill, our flyer, newsletter. Uh, it would be nice if the whole town was informed, just like the land, the property that we just purchased. You know, things like that to uh, to give the, our community a little bit more information and the reason why we done what we did and what we was planning on doing with the property uh, into the newsletter. It don't have to be in depth, but just a small column.
I'm thrilled to hear you say that because I would love council to start putting some information together to include in the newsletter. And I think it means more to citizens and not to discount staff, uh, but I think it would mean a lot to citizens to hear from their council members. Uh, and it doesn't have to be the same ones, you could take turns each month and staffs have to be helped. But uh, as a citizen myself, I think it would be really great to hear from, and I'm not forgetting the mayor, he's not with us tonight, but certainly he would be included uh, on things that you all deem important, that we're working on, uh, just to give that same. That kind of information. The only thing that I would just remind everyone with the newsletter, and it's a great tool, is um, not everybody receives the newsletter. We can certainly try to look at that a little differently, uh, if it goes in utility bill. But we can work on that internally and come up with some good ideas, but we would love to have council submittals on town items that, that council is working on. Not necessarily, just to be clear, I'm not looking for individualized items from council, but certainly if somebody wants to take the lead and put together something on, as you say, a good, a good example would be the, the land we recently purchased. I think that would be great.
Thank you all so much. Yes, Town.
Mayor Protem, the one thing to keep in mind, and I will be glad to remind you all of this too, the newsletter for April was submitted today.
Correct.
And the reason for that, I don't wanna just throw that out there and not, it has to go in, it goes in the utility bills. And to meet the deadline to go in the utility bill, I have to have it to customer service so they can send that along with the utility bills. So Terry reviewed it, we checked it all off and this is for Aprils and you think, golly, it's April, we're just getting into March. So what I will do, just like I do for staff, I will include you all uh, in the reminder. Uh, and I try to send it out about a week before, but uh, usually it's around the twelfth of each month. Several days before that, depending on when it hits uh, in the calendar, so that I can get it to customer service.
So you will let us know as to what date that, that you need to have a?
Yes sir, I will. And I, Town Manager Parker said it, but I would love to have topics to put in there because I seem to have to struggle at times to find new things and, and everything. And you can submit, as far as I'm concerned, things or just a general topic and we'll pull the information together for it.
That's awesome.
It, it would be great, and it's not that we don't mind pulling the information together, but it would be excellent to work in concert with the council members and actually the council members offering these uh, blurbs. It don't have to be anything lengthy, but I do think citizens would love to hear from you all uh, in your hand about uh, things going on with the town.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we'll send out some uh, sort of a skeleton outline of space and of course Dawn will give you the dates. We'll try to give you some insight into how we put it together, so you kind of know what you're dealing with in terms of space.
Awesome. Thank you so much. It sounds like we uh, as a council have our homework, uh, but that is amazing. Also another way, as uh, Dawn was saying, our uh, Town Clerk, is that our website. Um, I am a, a advocate for um, the technological age, right? So if we could have those things on our website and um, have, I guess identify time on our website and also uh, the app for our town. Uh, because those things are, you know, intricate too regarding communications and things that are posted on our Facebook and across um, all social media, because we do have um, you know, young adults and, you know, as far as our um, pre-teens and people all over the town, they receive communication in different ways. So if we could look into that as well, that would be amazing. Alright, so our uh, new business, we will have um, our Finance Director, Ms. Jessica, come to the podium and speak to us.
Good evening, members of the council. Uh, we sent out requests for proposals to finance several pieces of equipment and uh, vehicles that were approved for this budget year. Uh, the bid tab is included in the agenda abstract and it shows the interest rates that we received back. Uh, we received interest rates back from First Citizens Bank, Truist, First National Bank and Southern Bank. Uh, First Citizens came back with the lowest interest rate with four point two seven percent for the knuckle boom truck. That was for two hundred thousand and that would be for five years. And then four point four four percent for the public works truck and a commercial lawnmower for sixty-eight thousand for three years. Four point three five for the police cars for ninety-two thousand, that would be for five years. And four point three one percent for the sewer trailer and bypass pump for five years and that's a total of a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, the total of all of it together is five hundred and ten thousand. So we're recommending council to approve the financing terms and resolutions to finance the equipment and vehicles with First Citizens Bank.
May I please have a motion?
I move that we approve the financing terms in agreement with First Citizens Bank for our new equipment.
I second. If I could, um, I, I think this is hand in hand with what, what we're proposing here, but the um, there, there are four resolutions that are attached to this and specifically, we wanna make sure those resolutions are approved. Cause the resolutions, that's what, through it, that's what's adopting the finance agreement, so um, if you just add, add, yes ma'am.
Can we do one motion to approve all four resolutions?
I think you can because they're all together with First Citizens, but I, I just wanna make sure that the motion includes adopting the resolutions also.
Yes, and if you'll denote its resolutions twenty-four dash R dash thirty-one through twenty-four da, dash R dash thirty-four.
So I amend that motion to include all four resolutions, including twenty-four dash R to thirty-four dash R?
Thirty-one through thirty-four, yes ma'am.
Thirty-one through thirty-four dash R.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I second.
Alright, there has been a motion and a second. Um, will you all vote uh, with your clicker? The motion carries. Thank you. Um, next up, we will have our uh, Planning and Economic Development Director, Mr. Stephen Penn.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council. Today I'm gonna present a preliminary plat, South Brook Phase One. And I'll uh, describe the location in details. You've probably heard of this one um, fairly recently. So the applicant is Scott Moore of the Colley Group. This is a two hundred and forty-five plus acre site that is adjacent to Church Street Extension and Lory Ellis Road. Uh, this is just south of Melon Downs, Lori Meadows, um, and Holly Grove. Uh, in total, what we're gonna see today is just fifty point three eight acres of the two hundred and forty-five plus acres. Um, this is a uh, this is gonna show two tracts of land within our site. Tract A is a little over twenty-three acres, Tract B a little over twenty-six acres. So this is a PUD development, um, a little different than what we generally see. Uh, PUD stands for Planned Unit Development. This is a type of use and zoning in which um, you detail some of the specific ordinances for this exact development and we'll get into this a little bit uh, more in depth as I go along with this presentation. However, uh, it's greatly R six conditional district and multifamily residential district throughout this proposal. So this portion of the preliminary plat will have a hundred and seventy-nine residential units. Again, this is Phase One. Um, we will see um, more of the preliminary plat coming along very soon. They wanted to get this uh, development started. It's gonna entail a hundred and twenty-three single-family detached units and fifty-six single-family attached units. So attached units in the form of kind of town homes as, as we would typically say. Lot sizes on the R six is uh, over eight thousand foot, so eight thousand six hundred and eighty-nine square foot is the average detached uh, lot size. Um, the single-family attached lots will feature two thousand two hundred square foot. Um, there is some recreation land proposed. Tract A, you'll see point two nine acres of recreation space proposed. Tract B will be one point four ac, one point nine four acres of recreation space. One thing to keep in mind is we will actually be reviewing.
Can you take that box off?
Oh yep, sorry.
Thank you.
Um, we will actually be reviewing the uh, recreation space for uh, dedication um, at the final plat stage, but this is just them proposing, showing where uh, recreation space is gonna be proposed. Of course, it will have to meet the subdivision awareness, um, considered actually recreation space. Just to give a little bit of uh, history, site information for this, um, again, this site was proposed as a PUD. Um, a planned unit development is typically proposed on a site that has significant or unique uh, constraints. In this case, uh, the site has significant environmental um, sensitive land as well as a Edmont natural gas easement that runs through it as well. Um, and because of that, the applicant had to do a ton of research and um, uh, understanding the usability of the land prior to formulating this uh, this project. So this is one that had a ton of research um, on the front end of it, a little bit different than we typically see on a, on a typical subdivision. Um, the applicant also voluntarily conducted public meetings uh, prior to the PUD to determine the community's desires and concerns for this development. Um, prior to its completion and submission to the Town Council and planning the zoning. Numerous meetings were also held with the town of Winterville, different departments in the uh, creation of the PUD document itself and the rezoning. Um, Town Council approved the PUD document and rezoning at their January ninth, twenty twenty-three uh, Town Council meeting. So it's fairly new. Again, HUD is a conditional district that it creates its own guidelines and conditions for development. Any aspect of the HUD and conditional district that is not addressed or covered within the HUD ordinance itself is subject to the standards, procedures, and regulations of the town of Winterville. And we'll get into a little bit of that moments. This is just an image of the rezoning and HUD plan that was approved by town council. The darker green area you see is for open space. The lighter tan area is for single-family attached. And there's a small area, sorry, the lighter tan areas for single-family detached. This smaller kind of yellowish area is for single-family attached. And if anybody has any questions while I'm going along, I know this is one that's got a lot more details than a typical presentation. To give you a couple of examples of what this HUD documentation would show that may not be exactly as shown in our subdivision or zoning ordinance is the dimensional lot requirements within this development. R6 and multifamily have their own specific dimensional lot requirements that include lot width setbacks, things like that, that are just specific to this development. Again, something that's just specific to this development is the design of their streets. So one thing that's going to make this a little bit more unique than a typical residential subdivision, there is a tree-lined planting strip being proposed with a sidewalk that is set back off of the street. This is the site that we are looking at tonight. We've, over, over the years, referred to it as the UNC property. But this is the 245-plus acres. Church Street Extension over here, and then we've got Lori Ellis Road up here. This is an overlay of the preliminary plat on the aerial. So it's a little washed out, but you can see that there's a little bit of activity up here along the Lori Ellis site and then a little bit of activity over here on the Church Street site. And we're going to zoom into those two tracks right here in a second if you will. This is just the map itself, so it took the aerial off just to kind of give a little bit of contrast with the black and white. Okay, next, we are zooming into the Church Street side. So with the street A right here that is on the northern side, this is adjacent to all of the single-family detached. There's a street B right here. And all of this includes the single-family attached. Again, keep in mind, this is just tract A and B of the entire preliminary plat, so more will be on the way. But as it stands right now, this is the 56 town home units on this side. And then 57 single-family detached lots on the Church Street side. Zooming into it just, again, just with the paper itself. This is the northernmost aspect of the land. This is touching Lori Ellis Road. And this is 65 single-family detached lots that will feed into Melon Downs as a sub-street as well. Of course, the remainder of the preliminary plat will continue south and we'll get that submission fairly soon as well. This is as it touches Lori Ellis Road, so this is Lori Ellis Road right here. The street network comes into, comes into the site to the south of Lori Ellis Road. Just to give some subdivision highlights. So this site will contain open space and community areas such as pocket parks, walking trails, things like that. For all of the single-family detached structures, the applicant put a restriction or a condition onto themselves that features a minimum heated square, square foot of 1,800 square foot heated space for all single-family detached. Two car decorative or window garage, garages with the doors. Decorative doors, I should say. Architectural shingles. No duplicate home elevation will be allowed side by side across the street or adjacent diagonally to each other. And a minimum of six inch roof overhang on all sides. Building requirements that the applicant placed on themselves for single-family attached is a minimum of 1,600 heated square foot in the homes, architectural shingles, and six inch roof overhang on all sides of that as well. Something unique, again, we've stated before, this is featuring or proposing a streetscape with tree-lined streets within a designated planting strip, which will be maintained completely by the HOA. Planning and zoning reviewed this proposal at their February meeting and unanimously recommended approval. Just a heads up, if, if approved, construction drawings would follow this submission and would be reviewed by our technical review committee prior to development. Once the construction drawings are completed, it will be followed up by a final plat for final recordation of the lots. Staff does recommend approval of this Southbrook Phase One preliminary plat as it has been reviewed and meets all of the requirements of the Winterville Technical Review Committee. Meets all standards for the project. If anybody has any questions, I'd happy, I'd happily answer. We also have the applicant here that can provide some details as well.
Stephen, now, we do have an area not too far from here that has a HUD development. What's the closest area?
Um, I'm not aware of one in Pitt County to be.
No, I'm not talking about any Pitt County, I know.
Oh, 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 you're saying in other places? There, you see a lot of them in the Triangle area, you see a lot of them in the Wilmington area. It, it'll probably be, and again, I'm not, just because I'm not aware of one doesn't mean there's not one, but I think it'll likely be one of the first of its kind in this area.
Will there be any other questions from the council?
I have a comment. I don't have a question. When we are considering approval for, I guess, the initial development or continued research in the development, I'd like to speak to when new developers come in, how this will then affect us as a town as a whole in many different ways. We talk about trash pickup, we talk about water drainage, and any other residual effects that we will have. So when we are considering developments of this size and this capacity, we need to consider that as well, and that is my comment.
Yes, ma'am. I will say, all of those aspects are reviewed by each of the different departments during our review to ensure that it meets our standards and the state standards as well.
Also, Stephen, if I'm not mistaken, once we, when we approved this, with the gas line was placing for us that today, was, was it already there? I don't think so, was it?
Was the gas line in place when they were designing this?
Yes.
Yes, sir, it was.
It was already there?
It was, yes, sir.
Okay. And it should not affect none of the homes?
Well, it, it doesn't affect it now that we, it was there while he was designing it, but I will say he had to design around the, the gas easement for this project. So for instance, you can't put any cones or permanent structures on it. I think you can cross it parallel, things like that.
You can cross it parallel.
With a, with a road and things like that.
Alright, at this time, I would like, would you guys please give a motion for the Southbrook Phase One preliminary plat?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Southbrook Phase One preliminary plat.
My second.
Alright, there has been a motion and a second. If you all would vote using your clicker, please. The motion carries. Thank you. Alright, we do have two other agenda items. Councilwoman Hawkins, would you please state your concern for the first agenda item? Thank you.
Yes. My first concern. My first concern I wanted to bring before the council was about stray animals. Loose pets here in Winterville. I believe that this was an item brought before the council in the past. My question is, what as a town, what are we doing in terms of animal control? And or do we have something or should we create something in place to have maybe an emergency forest of homes? Or do we have a connection with the Pitt County animal, you know, the animal control? What do we do on a monthly basis? I get alerts to my phone for loose animals and there are at least 20 to 30 alerts per month. Cats, dogs, which are domestic animals, as well as wild animals such as foxes and rabbits. So that is what I wanted to bring before the council and possibly hear some discussion on what we can do.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hawkins. Town manager Parker, if you could address that for us, please.
Absolutely. First, I'd like to call to your attention to the copy of the Town of Winterville Running at Large or Creating a Nuisance Ordinance that is for your information. Historically, as I've reported to this board before, we operated what I'll call a part-time animal control process, and it has been taken on by both police and public works. They did a great job. We had a holding pin. It's still standing down at the Public Works facility. And it, it served its purpose. However, once COVID arrived, we suspended those services and we really determined that we are not in the position to run animal control services. Our folks, as much as they work hard and really tried to do their best, they're not trained and actually, we just don't have the facilities to operate such a service. So therefore, prior to me being out sick for a week and some of my cohorts being out sick for a week or so, we were, I was in conversations with Chad Singleton and Pitt County Animal Services to have a meeting. And our hopes and desires is to strike a contract, much like in recently Farmville and Aiden have gone under contract with them for full-time animal control services. My goal is to meet, have Anthony, Cliff, and interim chief Williams with us in a meeting with Mr. Singleton to see if we can enter into that agreement. Part of that's going to hinge on the space at the Pitt County Animal Shelter. I need to, we will have to discuss some nuances related to that and obviously cost. I do anticipate having an initial update for you at the next regular meeting. But as it stands right now, the Town of Winterville is not operating animal control services unless there were to be an emergency involving an aggressive or sick animal that's causing concerns. In terms of wildlife, Town of Winterville has no authority over wildlife. We're not allowed to trap it, touch it, anything. Someone would need to reach out to the Wildlife Office in order to see if they can assist where a specific situation is concerned. So we do not currently have any place over those animals.
Do we have or could we give the information to the Wildlife Office so that Councilwoman Hawkins can pass on the information to the citizens and for yourselves? And also Terry, I'm sorry, Town manager Parker.
Terry's fine.
If you could at least send council, I guess, an update of the date that you plan to meet, at least within the next, I would say, seven to 10 business days, that'd be great.
Yes, ma'am. If we can solidify a date, I'll be glad to do that. If we cannot solidify a date, I'll be glad to get that to you as well.
Perfect, thank you.
And I will also get the Wildlife Office's information out to all of you so that you can forward that to anyone having a problem or an issue.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's the kind of information we could include in our newsletter.
Absolutely.
We talk about information like that. Because I wouldn't know what to do if there was some, something other than a dog that was, you know, aggressively at me. I wouldn't know what to do.
Right.
If it was a coyote or a wolf or somebody seen a bear, so.
Well, and I do, we in the area of town that I live in, bear are not unusual. And crossing someone's Ring camera or their security cameras in the middle of the evening, fortunately, what has been seen is small. But I am with you, Councilwoman Robertson, I don't want to have a meeting at night with any of those folks, so.
Thank you so much.
I got one question.
Oh, sure, yes, sir.
Mr. Parks, my question is, you said something about space. I know that we haven't, you know, sat to the table yet and talked to the county, the county about a contract. But you said something about space. If you have a contract with them, does that means that we will have what do you mean by space?
Sure.
Let me make sure, that's, that's my question.
Sure. You all may recall that the animal shelter expanded a few years ago. Time gets away from me, I don't exactly know when that was. And they reached out to everyone at that time. And when I say everyone, I mean every jurisdiction at that time to discuss whether we wanted to go under contract with them then. There was a different director at the time and the amount we were quoted was, I considered to be astronomical for the services we were getting. And it did not seem like it was a good fit. But every time they go under contract with an entity, my understanding is that they at least try to set aside a certain amount of space for any animals that they may pick up from Winterville, let's say. I think that they are really busy. Cats or something that, that my understanding is they can't take on a regular basis because they're maxed out in terms of space. So that's what we really wanted to get down into and just kind of see what's available. And historically, we have not picked up what I would consider to be a large amount of dogs for our size town. I would just say in the, in this course of a year. However, we would need to discuss that and try to determine what we would have available to us so that they'd have somewhere to put animals if in fact we are under contract. Does that make sense?
Yes.
You're welcome.
Alright, thank you so much, Councilwoman Hawkins. Your second item?
Yes, my second item is town beautification. Let me see. Town spring beautification. In the past, I believe the council have spoken about beautification. And I would like to know where we are or what we can do in terms of beautification all around in every neighborhood of Winterville. For example, doing this through helping and assisting those who are disabled and or elderly by maybe helping to trim their. and/or elderly by maybe helping to trim their bushes, trim their trees, mow their lawns. Also, in addition to that, perhaps adopting a street. We are now on the heels of Spring 2024, and this is why I brought this to the council. I hope to see everyone's neighborhood beautified, you know, with the help of us as a community and what we can do even as a council, perhaps getting out one day and doing a community clean.
For the council, and I think that that is an amazing idea that would show unity in our community as a council. But to the council, are there any questions or comments regarding Councilwoman Hawkins' town spring beautification ask?
It just hit my mind, I just thought about it. Some communities, the chamber, you know, gives an award or a prize to the best yard or whatever. It might be something that we could suggest to the chamber, and they might be willing to do, to take that project on, to do that. Their street, you know, whatever. So, I'm all for maybe suggesting that to them, see, would they be like the startup for it, you know? That they would give an award once a month or whatever. I know the Aiden paper used to run the yard of the month, you know, that kind of thing. That might be a beginning to it.
That is something that can also go into the newsletter, so Yard of the Month. But I would like us to bring our attention to is, some people don't have the capability of beautifying their yard if they are disabled or elderly, so how, how could we launch out? I'm bringing this before the council, but I will also move forward on it. I wanted to bring it before the council, but I think making efforts to adopt a street or adopt a yard would be something that, like Mayor Pro Tim Harrell just said, would show a unification in our community, so I just wanted to bring that.
Mayor Pro Tim, if I may?
Yes.
I think that would also be a good opportunity for any volunteer organizations, any churches, things like that, to help individuals in the community who may not be able to work in their yard or what, so whatever the case may be. Additionally, I would, I mean, you want to make contact with those individuals because I would hesitate going on somebody's personal property
Exactly.
without contact or some type of relationship to, to touch their items or anything on their. So I would say churches, volunteer organizations, things like that, would be a good opportunity for individuals who may need assistance.
And this cycles back to the Human Relations Board with sending out surveys and asking the citizens what they need, so that cycles back to that with us as a core facet of it.
And that could be something that we could do. Identify, identify source people or be companies that would be willing to do somebody's yard or help someone with their yard. I've been in that position too, where I could not do my yard myself. I'm still in that condition, I can't do it myself. But, you know, and so I know what it's like to have to get someone to do it, even after getting someone to do it that it wasn't done, so I know even that. So that could be something that we could do on our Human Relations Board, since you've identified that and as a area of concern. We could maybe compile this or solicit people to do it, you know?
If I may, I think that would be excellent, because you all are very aware, I don't have to remind the council that that is not anything staff would be able to do.
Correct.
And so I know you all are talking about reaching out to volunteering in community facets of, of the, of Winterville and elsewhere to assist with that, but in any way staff can assist, we'd be happy to, in helping you all try to get these resources.
And lastly, thank you, Town Manager Parker, but lastly, there are many talented residents here in Winterville who are also skilled, who may also want to volunteer. So, I think that this is, would be a great idea, and I just wanted to bring it before council.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Hawkins. As of right now, I don't see any items for future agenda or future work sessions, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so we will move to our announcements. Our Town Clerk, Don Harvey, if you would read those announcements for us?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim. Excuse me. Planning and zoning board will meet on Monday, March 18th, 7:00 PM here in Town Hall Assembly Room. The Board of Adjustment meeting is scheduled to meet on Tuesday, March 19th. At this point, they do not have any business, so that possibly could be canceled. The Recreation Advisory Board will meet on Tuesday, March 26th, 6:30 PM in the Operations Center. April Agenda Information and Abstracts are due Wednesday, March 27th. And let me explain one thing here, if you see the use of the word abstract, that's the, the term that staff uses to explain what goes on the agenda. But if there's things that you all have, if you'll just send those in, that, that's adequate. I think with our discussion tonight, Human Relations will not meet again until after there's some conclusion on the discussions. Good Friday is on Friday, March 29th, and town offices will be closed. The next Agenda Review Meeting is Thursday, April 4th, in the Town Hall Executive Conference Room. And the next regular meeting of council is on Monday, April 8th, here in the Assembly Room. I have been able to obtain some tickets for the Town and State Dinner. At the Agenda Meeting, I said that they had closed it out, but I have been able to obtain some tickets, so please, if anyone can go, let me know, and we will make sure that you get one of those. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll have our reports from our Town Attorney and our council.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, I have no reports tonight. I'm also happy to say that we have no closed sessions, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smith?
Very brief, thank you everybody for coming out this evening. We appreciate everybody who came out, the, the input in the public comments, of course, always staff and fellow council members. I hope everybody has a wonderful week.
Councilwoman Robertson?
I'm glad to see those in attendance tonight and their participation. Somebody left a pen up here, so I say thank you for the pen. I like pens, so I really appreciate this nice pen. I do have special recognition for those organizations that have honored women, that are honoring women, have honored women, and honored our board during this past month. Church, Winterville Christian Church, right? Winterville Church of Christ.
Winterville Church of Christ.
I appreciate the breakfast that they gave us, and of course, I give reverence to our Town Manager, who is, you know, of course, female, which we don't have too many of those around when we go to meetings and stuff. And our record-breaking board here, four female members. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hawkins?
Yes, I would like to say thank you to Pastor Felton for the breakfast that he provided to us last Saturday. As I stated before, I am saddened that I missed it, but I thought it was an amazing way to reach out to the community. I'd like to tell him thank you as well for providing us with recognition and giving us the opportunity to meet his congregation. I think that he is doing just what the Bible says, and he's launching out with love. I think he is a great staple in the community. I would also like to thank our community for being here tonight. You are extremely valuable. I'd like to see these seats filled up every night, because we are here because of you. If there's no you, it is no us. Again, thank you, thank you, thank you. And lastly, this being Women's History Month or Women's Appreciation Month, I always, pink is my favorite color. My house, I painted the door pink, I have a pink porch light, and I'd like to say to all of the women that I, I appreciate you. We appreciate you. The men and women are here because of mothers and grandmothers, so we honor you today. I'd like to highlight the hidden figures. There were three black women who were able to help with the mathematics and the calculations to have one of our first flights to the moon. So we need to share this with our children as well. Thank you all.
Councilman Moy?
Yes, I would like to say, I think, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, our staff, board, and especially our citizens. And I would like to let Ms. Robertson know that, that wonderful pen that you received, not only you received one, all of us received one from the pastor of that church. And we just want to say thank you for both of the pastors. Yes. And also, I would like to wish everyone a safe holiday, Easter holiday, and keep us in prayer.
Thank you. Town Manager Parker?
If I may, I would like to extend my time to both Assistant Town Manager Bowers as well as Director White. I know that she handed out something up here, so I'll let you all decide who goes first.
Good evening. So in front of y'all, I had sat, it's a flyer, actually, invitation for our, our Winterville baseball opening ceremony this Saturday, March 16th at 9:00 AM. Looking at the weather, it should hold off on rain, so we're hoping that everybody can join us and, and help kick off the baseball season.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Mayor Pro Tim, members of the council, just wanted to say real quickly, you should have received the email from me, but it's going to be also published on our social media accounts as well as flyers in the utility bill. But we are requesting help and getting feedback from the citizens on our electric utility. We have coordinated with Electric Cities in a program to survey our customers. And so everybody that we, we had information on with regards to emails, may have received the email if we had access to it. But you also have a flyer, it comes out with a QR code, and the citizens can just scan the QR code. Really simple survey, takes hardly no time at all, but that feedback will be important to us as we look at how we move forward with our electric utility and how it, how we provide service to the citizens and the councilors here. Just wanted to, you know, get a little publicity for that survey real quick and let you know it's not a scam. If you did get an email, it is the Town of Winterville soliciting information, and so hopefully, we'll take time to fill that out and give us some feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony.
And Anthony, that's, that's the type of information that we're speaking of that need to be brought out to our community, because when I first saw it, the first thing I thought that it was a spam. And I would, I mean, you know, because it don't take much for it to take over your system. So, yes, those are the type of things that we need to.
If you're in doubt, you know?
Yes.
Be safe, so make, you know, always. But you can always, you're going to get a QR code, we've got flyers up at customer service as well, so you can just scan that QR code with your smartphone if you don't want to use the link that's sent to you in the email. It'll take you to the same survey, and you don't have to worry about whether you're clicking on the wrong thing or not.
We definitely need the feedback based on what we are seeing.
Thank you, and I'd like to say thank you to the Winterville Baptist Church as well, I'm sorry, the Winterville Church of Christ as well. Thank you for, you know, your service and the things that you do and the resources for the Town of Winterville, Elder Lyon and Elder Felton, thank you for, and thank you for being in attendance. Thank you to our staff for all the things that you do that we know about, and some of the things that you do on a daily basis that we don't know about to keep us safe and to keep us healthy and to keep our town clean. Thank you to the wonderful women, it is Women's History Month, so thank you to the wonderful women that are serving on this council. Last but not least, this is Social Work Month, so I would like to say Happy Social Work Month to all the social workers that are near and far from Winterville. And at this moment, I'd like to receive a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion?
Second.
I have a second. Vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Oh, clicker. I'm sorry, clicker. If we could use our clicker. All right, motion carries, we will adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.